I will call to order the regular planning commission meeting of January 4th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. All those for pledge?
We have a gavel for that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, call.
Belkey, here. Henderson, here. Shaw, Izapsa, Grant.
Here.
Patty Jasek.
Here.
Patterson. Here.
I practiced. Everything's impressed.
I'll take three or four minutes to get that down, so. If I want to get two teachers through school, did I ever get her right?
And then get mine right, I can't imagine.
Took me for every get, don't give. Took me for every get, I want to brown that O in there.
No O.
Ever.
Yeah, throw the O out.
Okay, we're gonna start tonight with the election of officers. We have three positions, there's the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary. So we'll look for nominations.
I make a motion that we keep our slate of officers the same for the other here.
Motion, second.
Second to motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That's not how it goes, usually the guy that's not you.
Who do you think this is, Washington DC?
Snooze, you lose. Okay.
We're barely in Washington DC, they get stuff done.
For tonight's meeting, we do have an deletion, a deletion. We're taking out the DDA business for the, for an amendment to tonight's agenda. Anybody have anything else?
And that's gonna come back in federality, correct?
Correct. Yes. All right, if no one has anything else to add or take away, we will look for a motion to approve as amended.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for the January 4th, 2023 planning commission meeting as amended.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, and that brings us down to the approval of the meeting minutes for December 5th. Everybody got a chance to go over those?
Everyone's quiet.
We're looking for a motion on the meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we have one abstaining this evening? Public comment?
Happy New Year.
Okay, moving on. We do have our new member present this evening. Alan, I'll let you give the last name and welcome to us.
Alan, Paige Jessick. Glad to be here.
All righty. Okay, so from there we go to the 2022 in review. We covered a little bit, I think. We did a good job this year. We had a lot of work in the ordinance book. Little bit more to go. But let's see, we approved two site plans for working space and true technologies. We had two land splits, one of which we're still working with. Capitoli Baptist was finished. We amended the SALU for Main Street. Oh, beekeeping. I don't know why I was looking at that as bookkeeping. That's right, we went over the beekeeping, we took quite a few meetings to go over that, we researched it a lot. You guys did a great job with that, and unfortunately, it was something that just didn't fit within the village limits. We did lose a member, but we gained a member. And that about covers everything that we did for 2022. Again, great job, everybody. Hopefully, we finish up these ordinance reviews and get that all taken care of. So we will go to the.
Look, we need a motion to present that to council.
Yes, that's right.
There we go.
Yes.
To submit to council?
Yep.
Make a motion to submit the 2022 year in review to council.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The 2023 meeting dates. This is where we set up for the entire year, the dates of our meetings. We are normally the first Monday of the month. Wondering if there's a consideration for anyone that would prefer to move this to the third Monday of the month.
I think it's a good idea.
It really cuts out a lot of the holidays. I think Becky said the only one that might fall into play occasionally would be the 4th of July. Other than that, we'd be working all around the holidays.
Well, I like the fact that it makes the calendar a little bit easier in that we can tell people, anything that you submit by the first of that month will be on the agenda that month for them. You'll have time to do, I'm assuming you'll have time to do a public hearing if you need it all. Fifteen, you've got your days to do all right. That's good.
So just like you're, so when they submit on the first, is it, who do they submit to if we're not adjourned?
They submit to the office.
Oh, okay.
And then I let the chairperson know that we have something new for the agenda.
Now, is everything submitted going from the public?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the public's invited to all our meetings and everything's addressed here.
In three weeks is enough time to notify them?
Well, so everything doesn't require a public hearing. The things that require a public hearing, we have to set that first. So in reality, they're going to get a whole month's notice for any public hearing. But the general public is, at any time can look at the agenda and is invited to the meetings, so.
Which are posted outside on the wall, so they.
And in, on the website. So they know, if they're interested, they can look on the, on the website to see what's on the agenda for that meeting. If it's something that sounds like it's gonna affect them or interest them, they're welcome to come. So, yes, usually we tell everybody, I need your stuff two weeks ahead of time to be on the agenda. If you don't get it to me at least two weeks ahead of time, then it's too late to be on the agenda because then that doesn't give you guys sufficient time to review it. So if, if we tell them, if we have it on the third Monday, that that's sufficient time, if we tell them the first of the month to have it in for that month.
We need to have a council meeting afterwards.
Correct.
Everything we need can still go there. Anyone opposed to then the third Monday of the month? All right, so we're looking at, starting in February.
That's a holiday.
That's a holiday.
Right away, huh?
Yeah. What holiday is that?
President's Day.
Is it really?
Yep.
All right, so we want to take the first Monday of the month in February?
Well, actually, seriously, no, that's actually observed still?
Actually, we're closed still.
Okay. No, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just surprised, actually.
We're, the office is closed.
Okay.
All right, so February would be the sixth would be our meeting date.
Okay.
March 20th?
Just for grins and giggles, hold on. Okay, so that won't pose a problem for next year, then? Okay.
Okay, that would leave April 17th, May 15th, June 19th, July 17th, August 21st, September 18th, October, the long month, 16th, November 20th, and December 18th.
I can see that one being.
That one might be a problem.
Yeah.
Which one?
December.
Council, because council will probably move to the 11th and the 18th that month.
Okay, so we'll stick with the 4th for December, anybody here or everybody?
Or we could do the 20th.
I would actually probably move it to the 20th because otherwise you only have two weeks between meetings, November and December.
True.
I can't take that one.
December 20th?
Yeah.
Darn.
Think it doesn't do selfies.
And then go to January.
Yes, January 20 of 2024. So one day, one, two, would be the 15th would be the third Monday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion takes that.
Okay. Everybody's all right with those dates, no opposition questions, we need a motion on those.
Do I need to run through all the dates?
No.
I make a motion to accept the 2023 calendar as discussed.
I second the, we, Megan mentioned all the changes for the other months, the December and February.
That's why she said as discussed.
As, okay. All right, I'll second that, then.
I think Alan will have a second. So we're ready, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Those dates are on. Okay. 2023 agenda for the planning commission. We are looking to finish reviewing the zoning ordinances and we will begin the master plan. We'll look into additional training through Rowe and McKenna and conduct any and all DDA business and any normal business as it should arise. Everybody's got anything else that you think we should look into this year? Now's the time to mention it, if not. But that one doesn't go to council, right? That's just for us.
No, I send the both.
Okay, so we'll need a motion to accept that for council.
Anybody?
I'm sorry, what was that?
We need a motion.
She was asking if you wanted a second, I was still reading.
You can do it.
Okay. Yeah, I'll go second.
Now, you're gonna make the motion.
Oh, make the motion?
Yes.
All right, so just the motion to accept a 2023 agenda?
As submitted and presented to council.
As submitted and presented to council.
There we go.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And it goes. All right, now for our ordinance review. This time, we start with Article 14. Exterior lighting, looking awful lot, in my opinion. But anybody got anything? Except for this. Where's it at?
What?
1402. Plats instead of plans. On 1402, first paragraph, second to the last word, first sentence. That's not supposed to be plats, is it?
Yes, it is.
It is plats, what are plats?
It's a type, it's, it's the way they plot out all of the house.
Okay.
In other words, what you see on the wall there.
Okay, all righty. So, not a correction.
Well, I hit something in 1406.
Okie doke.
See? It just seems a little odd.
Really?
Red light and lighting does not cause no off-site glare.
Yep.
So we maybe change that to any? We don't sound so, you know.
Does not cause any off-site, yeah, that sounds good. Lot better than that sentence.
Or you could just leave it out, does not cause off-site glare.
Correct. That too.
Yeah, let's just leave it out. Sounds better.
I guess I've got a question.
Yes.
I didn't know if I'm that picky or whatever we get, like I saw, where was it? I didn't, sorry, I didn't know, I shouldn't have noted. But they were talking about the lights for business. You know, everything gets turned off at 11:00. Unless you're like, you know, Blanca Goldsley, or some, assuming like the bars or whatever. Does someone really make sure to shut off after? Because I'm thinking, well, employees, by the time they clean up and leave, they should be on an hour after they go. You shouldn't just turn it off, do we really?
Per se, nobody goes around checking, oh my gosh, those lights aren't off at 11:00. If somebody were to complain that the lights are on too long, it would be investigated. But truly, we don't. Nobody goes around checking to verify that the village is dark at 11:00.
So even if a place is open at 11:00, I think you'd leave it on just for the safety of your employees?
And I agree with that.
Maybe an hour after or something?
Correct.
Ours is dusted on our light, isn't it?
Ours?
It's like that is dusted on.
Actually, because I don't change the time, it's 5:00 PM to 8:00 AM. It's on the light, it's on the dark. But the one over the police department's on all the time, they don't, it's not on a timer. So, and the one when the timer's off over this peak, it stays on too. So, um, that 11 o'clock, and I read that too, but I don't remember whether that was.
It's 14 for number two.
Oh, hours of operation.
Well, is it preused for security purposes?
Yeah, actually, it can get an exception right there.
Employees that are in there.
So it gives us some.
Where the use of property continues after 11:00 PM.
Gives them some exceptions, then.
So it doesn't really say, except where business is open after 11:00 PM. It says where the use of the property continues after 11:00 PM. So I would think that would, that would say cleaning people or anything like that.
We could give that a, go through there.
Kind of, yeah, spruce it up a bit. And whose job is it to go through and make sure that we don't have the fluorescent lights and they're all unshielded luminous tubes?
Well, if it's of an approved site plan that they changed to those, that would be, truly, it could be the code enforcer or the building inspector. But to be perfectly honest, I don't know that the code enforcer is gonna go through and check every light.
Right.
Again, that's gonna end up being if it's a complaint.
Right.
My only other issue with Article 14 was it does not address anywhere LED lights. It lists other acceptable lights, but doesn't really address LED. And I, I think, maybe ask the planner for direction where LEDs are the way everything's going right now. So.
That's a good idea.
Ask him how to incorporate that, because the way it's written, nobody could put out LED lights.
I'm not super familiar with them, I just know like when I buy like a light bulb for my house and LED, they like list what it's equal to.
Right, right. But, and again, so, and you're right, I just don't know, because we list if it's this type, you can have this watt. If it's this type, you can have this watt. So do we need to add something for the new type of light?
Anybody else on 14? All right, now, when I go through and assign these, I'm kind of looking at size, so I'm not overwhelming us with size of articles that we're going through. I didn't realize that we were at the wireless communication facilities.
We did, you said we're skipping 15.
Did we say we were skipping it? Okay. All right, because that's not something really that we can, we can look at changing, so. I didn't remember if we discussed that or not. Okay, so we're in 17, then. Special approval uses.
You don't have the 16?
No.
No, 14 and 17.
Yeah, it allows for an addition that gets something split in there.
It's reserved. Okay. Anybody find anything in there? Because I didn't.
The only thing I thought about is that maybe we add as one of the requirements that only completed and accurate applications will be considered. Unless it, seems like there was something somewhere that kind of got close to that, but it didn't.
Close to it, but not quite that specific.
If it's not complete, then don't, you know, go back and come back when it is, go home. We're not guessing, we don't have things, we can't make a decision on it because we don't have the dimensions of whatever, whatever.
That's pretty much famous practice, though.
That's what we do, though, a lot of times they don't know specifically what is required or what's gonna be looked at. And their, their application fee entitles them to two meetings. So if it isn't complete, then they're just not approved. We don't, we don't, you have to come back with the sufficient data. It's, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree. To some extent, they're told that in the office, hey, you're missing this, 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 or this. So we need that. Sometimes everything isn't caught, or the dimensions aren't there that truly are needed, then that would be something they'd have to submit and come back for their second meeting.
But it does say in 17.03, start out with, after a complete and accurate application has been received with appropriate review fees and application shall be reviewed in accordance with the following procedure and so on.
Usually, when you guys bring something back, it's because they've come to planning and now they've got their site plans, their building specs, and you find things like, there's no place for a dumpster, or this is too close to this.
So I have to go back and adjust that?
Right. Sometimes it's kind of out of your control to know whether they're gonna come with everything or not.
Anybody have anything else in 17?
I got, just a question is, so like the very first sentence, you know, says, an interest or purpose extends beyond the borders of the village. What's that mean, beyond? I mean, can we, do we, I don't know what's the word here, jurisdiction? I don't know what, what's that mean?
That I can't answer.
Wouldn't it mean something that your property extended out into the township?
Well, but it's under the purpose of special approval land uses.
Yeah, can we tell someone what to do once or?
No.
You can't, you're always on township property.
Not outside of the, so let me ask.
Good catch.
Let me ask the planner what that means.
Is this article just like something that's like an exception?
It's something that doesn't fit the rules the way they're written, but some things are allowed to adjust the rules with other conditions met, so that's what this section addresses.
All right, because first thing I thought to my mind is like, I don't know what you guys went through, like when they did the skateboard park, is there's probably a bunch of stuff there that's probably not normal.
Okay, but that's in the township, so.
Oh, now it's a township.
Yeah, we don't do anything, but a perfect example would be putting an industrial building or a business in a build, in a residential district that's not allowed. You, there would be special permission you'd have to get because there's gonna be special conditions you have to meet. So that's truly what this section covers, is how, how we, you can go about getting those exceptions accepted. The skate park would have been one of these, I'm sure, inside of the village.
Anything else in 17? Okay, let's move on. So. Okay. For next time, we have a site plan review as Article 18.
We should just do that one.
Yeah.
That next one.
That's a big one, and I think we really want to pay particular attention to all the boxes like we did way back in the beginning. So, yeah, let's go with just 18 for next time.
All the boxes and the charts?
Yeah. Each and every box we went through like before. I think we want to make sure that everything inside those boxes fit what we're looking for. So that takes care of zoning ordinance review. Reports. We do have the, what is the medical supply?
Well, it's actually under just Joseph Herman.
So Mr. Herman will be returning, he has gone to ZBA and he was. Yeah, he was granted the exceptions to his property because of course there are changes in that property that just cannot be made, it's just not possible. So we're going to go through and look at all the rest of it for his site plan, getting that property split off into a sellable unit. So he will be back next meeting. And we'll go over everything. He does have a very good drawing there, so you can still use that for review before he comes in. Other than that, I really don't have anything other than, Alan, again, welcome, we're glad to have you. And Becky has something to add?
Something came up in the last month about food trucks and how they're regulated, if they're regulated. Do we have any ordinances regarding that, which we do not. The planner suggested creating an ordinance, whether it be a zoning ordinance or a village ordinance in the code of ordinances that does regulate food trucks, so.
How do we regulate them?
Well, um, they would have to have a permit, they would have to have times where they could be located, that kinds of. He sent me a sample, but because it wasn't on the agenda discussed. And truly, it's up to council whether they want it as a code of ordinance or a zoning ordinance. So, but he sent me samples, but I want to let you guys know that it's on the, it's on the burner because they're popping up all over. You know, they truly are, whether it's in a subdivision or, you know, they've been in the grocery store parking lot a few times. So, as the planner said, several communities regulate them because it takes business away from their normal businesses that are located in the town. So some cities don't want all that competition. Inside a subdivision has a different rule than the ones that would be associated in a big empty parking lot, that kind of thing. So he sent me some samples, it's something that actually I had two people call and ask me about, so.
I have another community that's reviewing that right now. One of their biggest issues that they have at their board level is where they can stop and park.
Yeah.
Because people are coming across the street, little kids are running high.
It's chaos. I've seen a couple of them over in Romeo, and there's just, there's people that will come from any direction, they're not, when they're in the center of town, people are not using their crosswalks, they're just, they're going because they're getting whatever's at this food truck, so.
Disco?
Yeah.
Disco? And when you said the food trucks and people running across the street, was that at dispo?
No.
Oh.
What is dispo?
Uh, it's the hat shop. The marijuana dispensary.
Oh, yeah, no, they're usually up at the, at that gas station right there. And then I've seen them pull back farther towards where the Bailey Street, where the little.
They're back there.
Cafe, they'll come back in there or they'll park up at the corner.
Seen where Frontierland or?
Yeah, I've seen them down in there, too, yeah. And that actually is a good area for one, we don't have an area like that, but that's actually not a bad area for one to be parked at because the.
I was always surprised when they'd come to the, to the concerts during the summer.
Well, and actually, that's one of the inquiries I had. So the village has what we call a solicitation permit, but it's a solicitation slash peddler permit, which is what any of those would fall under right now, and somebody at the park would have to get that because it's village property. But then again, we still end up with the whole safety thing and where would they park and, and.
Yeah, because the park hasn't got much parking during, during the concerts.
It is something because it is an in thing, now, is it a passing thing? I don't know. You know, but it is a current.
It's been around a long time.
Well, and it's, and it's only become more popular. I mean, you see all the time where down in McComb Township, every other subdivision's got one.
And so I heard they're going through the subdivisions like they used to the factory streets?
Yeah.
They go through the subdivisions like that now.
Yeah, and they have, they pick it, they have a schedule, and I'm at this sub on this Tuesday, that sub the next Wednesday, and they all have different, so.
It says there was a house built in a new sub and a taco truck would come in there.
Yeah, yeah.
With all the workers.
It's, I think it's something worth looking at.
I was curious if there was, there was ever gonna be a replacement for Mike. Well, is there any options to have a replacement from council for Mike when he's away?
Cannot do one while he's away, there's no temporary substitutions. The only fix, 'cause we did, I explored that before. The only fix would be to get a whole new liaison from council.
So, they can just appoint someone for three months and appoint them?
Nope, they have to appoint them. They just have to say they're appointed, and then when Mike comes back, if they choose to change that appointment, that's fine. Would they do that? I'm not sure. Um, but it can't be done as a temporary thing, 'cause it's just not, we already went, we tried that once before when he was on, and it just doesn't work. So... That would be something that would have to be asked of the village president to, um, consider a different appointment.
So, I had one quick question while you're here. So, you're talking about, uh, Section eighteen, tables. Uh, that's all the tables, eighteen-one, eighteen-nine, eighteen-ten, eighteen-eleven, eighteen-twelve? Okay, so we're just making sure that everything makes sense?
Same thing as we've been doing through all the rest of them, yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure the same page on this one, so we're going through.
We're good, yeah, so, just go ahead and review it, if we have all the rest of them, make your notes, and when we meet, we'll go through any questions or changes that you might wanna visit. Okay, anything else? It is seven thirty-two, looking for a motion.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seven thirty-two. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven thirty-two.